This is the Town of Bolton Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, January 7th, 6:30 PM. Town Hall and Zoom. First, I'd like to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Like to call the meeting, no order, now it's 6:01. We'll start off with public comment. Is there anybody you'd like to make a public comment?
Lori Norear, I live at 50 Linwood Drive in Bolton, obviously, owner by the lake. I'm here to talk about our main power line, which is a bizarre topic. There's about forty to fifty households. We live on Linwood Drive, Colonial Road, Sunnydale, Unifer, and Orchard Lane. All but five of the houses are on town-maintained, town-owned roads. The problem with our power line is it comes down Colonial Road. Two-thirds of Colonial Road is dirt and is considered private. The last time the road was used as a through road was probably in the late 1970s, early 1980s. The road is essentially an impassable cow path with an infinite number of trees and tree debris which falls on the lines and we lose our power incredibly frequently, four to six times a year, anywhere from a couple hours to several hours. The last time we lost our power was the Saturday before Thanksgiving for like eight to ten hours and the time before that was the Friday before Thanksgiving. We have fewer hours and if anybody was giving dinner, it was quite inconvenient. As society has become more technologically advanced, losing our power is not only inconvenient, it is unhealthy and unsafe. We would like the town to help us residents do something to hit the tree branches, trim the back so that we don't lose our power seemingly every time the wind blows. It also is a town issue. If we lose our power for more than 24 hours, a crew from the town with a truck and a generator has to go house to house to energize the sewer hurdles so that the sewage is pumped. So we just wanted to bring it to the town's attention and to look for your help in solving the problem.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, can I get her last name, please?
Oh, Bernier, B-E-R-N-I-E-R.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, I'm John Lender, Jonathan Lender, L-E-N-D-E-R, 23 Colonial Road. I had a discussion with Mr. So this will be a little repetitive to you. But we're going to this, I second everything that Lori just said. I've been here ten years. We've talked for years with our neighbors about, oh, another outage, another outage. There's a puff of wind today and, you know, maybe it's going to get over thirty, thirty-five miles an hour. We may lose our power and we often do. And, you know, I call it with my friends outage alley, this wooded area where there and I can actually, you know, every day I can look out and I can see limbs hanging over wires and it seems inevitable that they're, they're going to fall and they often do. That's where almost all of these outages originate. And, you know, we're looking for, to start with, with the town. I mean, I'm probably going to talk to none of our state reps just to get this on the map, you know. We, we talk among ourselves and individually, we, we call up Eversource and individually, we don't make an impression. After what happened with the two consecutive long seven to eight hour outages, we thought, you know, we can get listened to if we talk as a group and maybe the town can help weigh in with Eversource and, and, you know, we're not asking, you know, we're not, we're not the only people, you know, we're not the only people who have, who have outages, but we, I think we do have more than our share and we're like often the first to go and then both among the last to come back, it seems when you look at the outage, outage map. So we just would like to start a dialogue and I've been invited by Mr. Rupert to come in and make appointments after we learn exactly what's what with this right of way, you know, what are, what are Eversource's responsibilities? What are their rights? And it seems that if we have a dialogue with the town and with them, maybe as Mr. Rupert said, we could get a meeting with a representative from Eversource, then maybe we can get something done. The last time that I got on the phone, November 22nd or 23rd with a very nice lady from Eversource, she took down my number and my email and said, you know, you're right to call and you're right to talk with your neighbors and I'll have the district supervisor get in touch with you this coming week. I thought it's never going to happen and it didn't happen. And so we want to get listened to and, and we think that if they listen to us, they'll do better by us. And we're, we're not asking for anything that if, if we were in your position, that we wouldn't be willing to do for residents of the town and ask them. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hi, Dan Zelinski, Z-I-E, L-E-N-S-K-I. I live at 15 Colonial Road in Bolton. I was brought up in the city. We always had electricity. I moved out here in eighty-three. By eighty-five, I had to buy a generator because we were losing power so much. And so you, you were just burning that generator out and now I'm on my second generator. And my calculations have been we lose power and it's not always, but we're colonial made Sunnydale from Sunnydale up to Kubels. That's where it's not a finished road. It's a cow path and if you look up, you can see the limbs hanging over the power lines and our power comes from Kubels down the Colonial. That's, that's where it originates. So if you were to look up that road and see the trees, you're going to say, this is just a matter of the right wind. It's, it seems unfair. We pay the same taxes as everybody else that we should lose power so much when it's a fixable, it's a fixable item. But it's almost like that, that road has been abandoned. Now, there's no maintenance done to that road whatsoever. They maintain Colonial Road up to Sunnydale. That's the end of it. It just, I guess coming from the city, it seems like I've been back in time because we lose power so much. And that's about it for me.
All right. Well, thank you. I understand what you're saying. Sawyer?
For our guests, we may not know, but the board does not interact with you during public comments.
Pardon?
The board does not interact with you during public comments.
Okay, I was insured somebody might have had a question. That's why I stopped and stood.
And I didn't want you to feel that we were not interacting, but it's board talks.
I understand. I haven't.
Hi, Holly McDonald, M-A-C-D-O-N-A-L-D, 52 Linwood Drive. I'm actually Lori's neighbor. I did some research on my own. I did call the town twice. I did call Eversource. I didn't get calls back from anybody, which was disappointing. At least to tell me there was going to be a meeting, I found out through Lori. One of the concerns that I have is what everybody's been talking about with this right of way. And I did a little bit of research on the land records from what I could do online. And I could not actually find a right of way between Helco or Hartford Light Company, CLMP, Eversource, or anybody. Now, it may be that it's on one of the maps or something, but as they're saying, it's as though it's been abandoned and has become an abandoned road. We have probably four or five landowners along that strip there. And I, it seems to me that it would be something that would be appropriate to have a search done, determine if there really is a right way there that was granted to the town or to Helco or to whoever to make sure that that's maintained properly. And if it needs to be maintained on private property, that can be done. They have to get permission. Helco, you know, or Eversource would have to get permission, but they could get that permission. And with the backing of the town, it would be very helpful because as they're saying, we're losing power a lot. The other thing that we've noticed and Lori got it and I think another neighbor down the street, we had our generators running, but then we were getting some differences in our, our power level, even though the power was still off. Sure, it was simultaneous, which was weird. So we are concerned about it. We know that they've done some work there, but they need to come back and we have to come up with a solution because I don't think that, I don't know, ten, fifteen percent of those people that we're talking about actually have generators and can haul them out when we have a long power outage. And a lot of these families have young, young children. So if there's anything I can do to help in any way that way, I'd be glad to do it, but somebody needs to do something.
Well, thank you for your input. Well, I guess there's no others unless there's somebody online.
May I just give this to you? This is what, the ground I wanted to cover. I didn't read from it, but it, you're welcome to.
Okay.
Keep it as a.
We can put it in the record.
Yes.
Mr. Spreckman, could I ask them if they would give us their name, address, and phone number or email?
You could do that. Yeah. There you go. Just pass it down and just give it back if you're done. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Let's see, correspondence. We all have the correspondence from Rod Harley. In reference to the opposition to the parking lot at Bolton Notch State Park. So the DOT or who's that? Deep has decided to expand the parking lot at Bolton Notch Park. I don't know. I believe they've got all the money put aside for it and it was on, was it ARPA money? And they're looking to add up to a hundred parking lots. And I guess the question is, what are we, what's the thoughts of the board on that? Yes.
I, when, when the, the multi-use trail was being designed between Manchester and Bolton Notch, I had a number of meetings with the design team about various issues regarding that trail. And one of the things that, that they talked about was that one of the benefits of the, that section, that loop section that stops at the commuter lot was that, that, that commuter lot was going to be the new parking area for the access to the trail. So I, you know, as of the, as of the time of the design, it was never the intention of this lot being expanded or to be used as the primary lot. So, so I, I tend to agree with this letter that I don't, I don't see a need to expand that lot because I, I think that the access really is difficult, getting, getting in, getting out of it. And there is a better parking area available at the commuter lot. So I don't, I don't have a recommendation for what the board should do, but I, but I, I would, I would think that seventy-five, well, I'm not even sure where this, where this money is, is coming from, but to me, it, it, to me, it should, yeah, who, but is it DEP? Needing the charge on this? I'm not really sure.
Yes.
Okay. I, I just don't think it's, I think that there's money that could be spent. It should be spent elsewhere and I wouldn't support expanding that parking area.
Amanda?
Um, I concur with, you know, Rod and Gwen. I guess my question is what communication has the town received from Deep and when did we get in? When did we not?
When did we?
Yeah, that, does the town receive?
I don't recall having ever seen that information. This is the ARPA money.
I mean, I know it's state land, right? But still, you would kind of expect.
I, I first personally learned about it at a Hawk River Trail native. It was just before I received a copy of the letter from the Conservation Commission.
Having worked on, on, on that original trail, Gwen brought up a point that we, we really emphasized when we pushed to have that flyover to go to that, to the existing commuter parking lot. And that, and everyone on board, that was one of the reasons they're willing to spend the additional hundreds of thousands of dollars to build that bridgeway over there because they had the parking area that could be expanded if they needed it there. And having it expanded with some of the most horrendous access and exit is to me, is creating a traffic hazard. It, it, it doesn't improve anything. I think it creates an issue that's, that's tricky enough as it is. And I frankly would oppose it with a suggestion that two things. One, that commuter parking lot is in need of some serious help. They, they would refurbish that and they, they build in an area they can expand it if they need it in the future. And that would be my suggestion and I frankly, I, I'd be willing to make, if it's appropriate, make a motion to the board to suggest that recommendation back to, is it Deep that's doing this? Yeah.
Yeah.
Deep.
I would just also, I think we should add to that recommendation that they should consider putting in signage that points, it's more, you know, the points to the commuter lots. People know that it's there and that there is extra parking over there and it's safer and easy to access.
Gets lit up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also, I don't, I'm sorry, Pam. Go ahead. I think that some of the land that includes the access and the pond area where there's currently parking is town of Bolton land. So, you know, the, the, the property lines there are pretty confusing, but it's not all state-owned land there. So I'm kind of surprised that DEP has not notified the town of its, of its proposal to do, to do with this expansion project. Secondary comment on that.
Well, I think we need to focus on safety. There is a horrific entrance and exit at that point, the juncture of six and forty-four that merge at the same point. Those people that aren't familiar with the area. Very steep, terrible. I would not recommend it be expanded. I would rather even see it go the opposite direction and discourage people from using it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, the commuter line is perfect and it's designed that way with the biker, unless they want to give us seventy-five million and fix the whole.
Just add.
We like that one.
Here, here. So.
Will you expand this if you please?
So this is the ARPA money, which we have first realized that this ARPA money had to be signed up and by the end of last year, December 31st. So, so this is, this has been, this is a finished deal for that. This, as far as the money goes. And if you were to change that, that money would go away. It's, it's all state-owned.
You've confirmed that?
True.
Or you're making an assumption?
Well, we can, I'm making an assumption that, well.
But even so, it doesn't, I mean, if, if the board feels strongly, it doesn't hurt to send a letter.
Right. I.
Can we see if there's a consensus?
All right. All in favor of saying, sending a letter? Can you say aye?
What?
For consensus?
Well, to.
Draft a letter?
To draft a letter, to send to Deep to oppose the expansion of the additional parking.
Primarily for safety reasons.
With a copy to our legislator.
For what?
I think we should copy our legislators otherwise.
Well, yeah, no doubt, but.
We should notify them of this, the situation as it stands, but I would like to ask if Mr. Cameron, one would consider being a liaison with you and Jim.
Along with me? I don't know that I'm, I don't know that I'm going in your direction. I don't think I am, but because it's, it's not our property, it's the state and they're going to do what they want. And we don't want them telling us what to do with our property, do we? So.
I'm not, I'm really not. I believe that the town owns some of that land.
I think, I think she's right.
So the, the first inkling we had that anything was going on was, I think it was last winter, Rod called me and said, there's flags all over the place. Do you know what they're for? And I said, no. And I think he's been ferreting this out since then. And I'm not sure, I haven't had a chance to talk to him. But I'm not sure where he got his information. But I think he may have found out from him Bradley at Deep, the same, essentially at the same time that I did, that this project was going on.
I'm, I'm sorry. You know, since they have a set of funds dedicated for that area, it doesn't mean they couldn't tweak it. I mean, quite frankly, those funds could be easily be utilized for improvements of, of some of the facilities there. The, the trail itself, I mean, rather than, I, I, who knows how they wrote this thing up or how it's stated.
I think, I think you're right. If it, even if it is ARPA funding, they could probably tweak the scope of a project.
Right.
As long as they're under contract for that amount.
Because there's always, I, I, no, because that area, it does get this considerable amount of traffic and this and that. And we, we brought up points about notifying people access, where to go, where, and, and simple, simple stuff like that. It hasn't been done. It should be done. And we've had folks who work, who utilize that trail, who had suggested some improvements on it, that are costly improvements. And these are the funds that I think could be more properly, appropriately redirected to be used that way rather than expand the parking lot. It would solve those issues and at the same time, I think, not create a, a, what I consider a very dangerous hazardous issue on traffic. That's my comment. So do we have a consensus on sending a letter?
I think.
We do. Okay.
Maybe Jim. Focused on safety, access, commenting about the flyover, utilizing the commuter parking lot and adding signage so that people actually know where to park and copy to legislators.
We can say, we, we know you're trying to do a good thing, but. They're the ones with all the engineers who know the traffic on the highway and they know the entrances there and. Thank you for pushing my button. Having worked with their engineers and, and, and the trail and also the intersections on there, I can tell you, they have come up with the most horrendous variations of how to deal with that issue. That I could put a number of squirrels with little markers and running around and looking them up with as good a project in some of the projects. All right. So survey says, send them a letter. Next is the Colonial Road area regarding power outage and tree trimming help.
Is this Mr. Spreckman?
Yes.
I would like to adjust to the board that we put this on our next meeting agenda as an agenda item with an interim having the Selectman's Office and the Town Clerk's Office look at the issues of road ownership right of way and other outreach to Eversource and then report back at their next meeting.
May I?
Yes.
I, I would prefer just to try to get a meeting between Eversource and these wonderful folks. It, that's, that's going to take another month. And we won't have made progress.
Then I would ask that you just report back. That would be easy.
At the next meeting, having that as an agenda.
That, that might be a part of, that might be a part of our work, but I would really rather that's where my focus would be. We've had, we've been in contact with the Eversource arborist. He, he, you know, informed us that two years ago, they did tree trimming there. He's gone out again and he didn't think there was much of anything that Eversource could do at this time. But I can try to facilitate a meeting because I think these folks have questions that even I can't answer. And perhaps Eversource can actually answer them directly. So I would like to try to facilitate a meeting between Eversource and, you know, this nice small group of people who are wonderful to deal with.
It's a, an issue, I think, too, of land ownership right of way and the usage and really looking at the 21st century needs, thinking is important. We have to have the well that's right there, the community well. And maybe we begin to do a little strong-arming of the electric company to look at redirecting where the power is coming from.
Or at least having redundant fees.
In a lot of those cases, they do a loop.
Right. They do, so they have switching.
So that if one, if that line gets a short, it loops around a different direction. So.
Is the water table too high to put them underground there?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Needs a dodge.
For not enough homes.
Just for that small stretch from Kubels to Sunnydale? Got infrastructure dollars. Why don't I stop that?
Okay. Is there any other comments on that? Then we're going to move on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you raised your hand.
No, I'm sorry. We're going to move on to the, I don't see anybody online either. Waiver justification for the HVAC that's just a post-donation notification from the school board. That they're going to be moving forward with that. Is there any questions on that? Seeing none? We need the approval of the minutes. December 3rd, 2024.
Also.
I'll second.
Amanda seconds. Is there any questions?
Item eight, the last paragraph, it begins G. Mora. I actually think that I was the one who made that comment. So I think that should be G. Marion. Bob, is that your recollection as well? Because it's either, it's either you or me. And it's page four. Last paragraph, it says G. Mora recommended. So it's either Gwen Marion or Bob Mora, but it's not G. Mora. You know that.
Writings. I think that was you.
Yep. Thanks. I agree. So that's, that is the only question I have on these minutes.
Is there any other questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's six, yes, and one abstaining. And for now for December 17th.
The adoption of the minutes I presented for the December 17th, made special.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions?
I'm sorry, who moved and who seconded?
Mather.
Bob Moore moved it. Mather Clark seconded.
Thank you.
We love that we have an audience, but you guys don't, shouldn't feel that you have to stay for the meeting.
Yeah.
We would like to thank the board for listening to our problem log.
Yeah, and it seems that.
Hopefully we can come to a solution.
Thank you.
Well, there should be a resolution that a worker.
Is there any questions on the minutes for December 17th? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's six, yes, and one abstaining. And Sawyer. Now for the minutes of December 30th. Good night.
Good night, guys. Thank you.
Thanks. Take care. Take care. Take you guys.
You guys have fun. I.
You guys have fun. I want to.
I'll move the adoption of the, December 30th special meeting. As presented.
Is there a second? Amanda seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Was that Gwen?
Seconded.
Amanda seconded. Who moved it?
Bob Mora.
Bob again. Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's five, yes, and. Two abstaining, three, Tim.
No, three, I'm abstaining too.
Oh, uh, that's four, yes. We have Pam, Mather, and Tim all abstaining. All right, and then we move down to reports and updates.
We have, um, a student, Mr. Shepherd Livingston, and he is on our agenda for item XB. I would ask that we. Would the board's, uh, consent move it forward so that he could get back to doing, studying for midterm?
All in favor? Yep, aye, aye, okay. Shep, you get the floor, your number, you can move to number. Uh, five. A plus.
Thank you, Mr. Fornier, Selectman Fornier. Uh, my name is Shepherd Livingston. I live at 59 Maple Valley Road. Um, I'm here to talk about my capstone project. Uh, which I'm planning to do a one-mile road race, uh, on February 2nd. I'm naming it the Groundhog Day Mile. Um. I have a map of my. Uh, proposed route. See if I can share it.
I think you can.
Yep. So. So, can you guys see it?
Yes.
All right, so the plan, my planned route is to start the race at the top. At the kind of the crest of the hill of Brandy Street, right by these two houses up here, there's a barn. And then the race will, um, continue down Brandy Street before taking a left into Hanover Farms. And then finishing, uh, just before the cul-de-sac. I, I've ran this course before doing a time trial for a track, so I'm familiar with it. And I think it would be a, a good, you know, route for the runners. Um, I'm planning to start the race at 11:00 AM. Um, because it's, it, um, hopefully give time if there's snow for snowplows to get around in the morning. If there's snow overnight, as well as it, also, we're just works out my personal schedule. Um. I have a snow day of February 9th, so a week later, in case, uh, it needs to be called off because there's too much snow. Um, I'm planning for, I talked to Mr. Messelli at the high school to get permission to use the, um. Uh, the school facilities, the bathrooms, uh, and have, have a warm place for the runners to congregate before and after the race. As well as parking, obviously. Um. So I want to ask the town to help for the town, or help for the town is to close the roads, um. That, uh, funnel into the course, uh, for the time when the races are on the course. So, um, Loomis is one of the roads that, that enters onto the course as well as, um. Brandy on both sides. Uh. Uh, I think.
Can I throw up just for one second?
Yes.
I thought I seen an earlier version of this and it was Loomis down Brandy. Did you change that?
Yes, you're correct. Um, I had an earlier version that started at the end of Loomis and then went down, uh, to Brandy. And I've since come to the conclusion that I think this route is better. Um, just because it keeps the runners, when they finish, you know, they're on a more quieter road. Which obviously the road's gonna be closed at that point, but I think it'll be better, um. Better for that. And, and plus the start is also, you know, they're not, not, there's gonna be no cars, you know, there. If I'm starting at this, there's gonna be cars, you know, that are, can still come to that intersection, obviously not gonna be turning on a Loomis. But they're gonna be going by. I think it'll be also easier for people to get to the start of the race, um.
So the start is at the, at the top of the hill before the high school?
Top of the hill.
Got it. Thank you. Do you understand where, do you understand where it's going?
So you're, you're parking at the high school, everybody walks up to the top of the hill, it begins, you run down and end up. On Hanover?
At the end.
You have it in, we do a walk back?
Yeah, so runners, runners will walk back. Um, they're free to mill about for a bit, but then they'll walk back, you know, you're obviously using the, you know, the left side of the road. Um, I don't know what, sorry.
How many people are you anticipating? Just trying to get a sense of. You know, the timing and the number of people that might be.
Yeah. I would love to get 50 to 60. You know, obviously I'm, I'm finding out that I'm, you know, running, running time crunch right here, you know? It's, everything's been going quick with school and that sort of thing, so I would love to get 50 to 60 runners. That's, that's about as much as I see.
Take you 20 minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome walkers too, but they shouldn't take any more than, you know, it's a mile, than 20 to 25 minutes. Then, then, you know, you gotta count another 15 minutes, you know, walking back to the school. Yeah.
Amanda?
But I, yeah, sorry.
Give my ignorance, Shep, but is there like a purpose behind this? Is it raising money or like, how, what's the relationship of a race to your capstone project? I don't know much about the capstone projects.
So, as far as understanding the Bolton Capstone is just a, it's a, um, project to demonstrate, you know, you're un, like how much you've. You know, you've learned with, you know, leadership skills and, you know, organization and that sort of thing. You know, I do have a charity in mind, um, in case I have any extra funds, I'd like to donate the money to do the, um, project graduation. You know, but getting that money back to my class as, you know, I'm a graduating senior this year. Um, you know, we're gonna, I'm planning a, a $15, uh. Um, sign up fee because I do have to cover, um, prizes. Um, and possibly, you know, some baked goods or something like that for the runners. And, and the big cost is opening the school, um, cause you know, it's Sunday, so I think the jan, the custodians get like. Double, uh, over, double overtime pay or something like that, so. I, both of the costs is about 160 bucks, um, for the janitors to open and close the schools. Uh. So.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so hopefully the cost obviously should cover that and then any leftover funds will be donated to the Bolton, uh, project graduation.
Um, and who's gonna be closing the roads? Did you have a discussion with the fire department or?
Yeah, we, I, uh, I had correspondence with, uh, Bruce Dixon at the fire department. And he said that, um, that the roads, that we, that we would talk at the meeting here and then. And then, uh, reconvene after that.
So we said. I believe the chief is on the meeting. Chief, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening. Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening, Bruce. How are you?
A little better. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. First one to ask me that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So what, what's your thoughts on that as far as personnel and, and, um.
Yeah, I think the conversation that, uh, back and forth with Shep and I applaud him for taking out a project like this. Is that after this meeting and what the, uh, body of the Selectmen thought. Then it would be a sit-down with the town administrator, the state police, and the fire department, and we'll come up with a plan at that point. I see the road, uh, what I'm understanding is the track now is probably from like Alexis down to Hanover, strictly on Brandy Street.
Yeah, just, yeah, just, uh, I said.
Forget the 100 feet. Forget the 100 feet. That's here, you've got to be shut down.
Yeah, just.
Yep, that's gotta be a conversation, uh, as I mentioned to you earlier, with the state police, town administrator, uh, the fire department, come up with something if we can, yep.
Okay.
Bob, to answer your question, you're looking at shutting down, uh, Brandy and Alexis, you're shutting down Loomis, uh, at Brandy. And realistically, a signage at Hebron and Loomis. And then, uh, signage at, uh. Hanover, just past Hanover, and a, uh, basically road closure sign down at Brandy Street in Bolton Center.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Just safety-wise, uh, for any pedestrian, any, uh, vehicle traffic, yep, especially in light of what just happened down in, uh, New Orleans.
Okay, all right, is there anything else, Shep? Um.
Um.
Bruce?
No, again, uh.
Sorry, you go first. Oh, okay.
Yep, Shep, the floor is yours. Fire department's clear.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, no, I have, um, insurance is being provided by Bolton Boosters Club. Um, they have the waiver, um, for the runners to sign, so.
Mr. Callahan?
Yeah.
Yeah, me. Um. Concept is fine, but I think for, for us to approve anything like this, it would have to be, uh. A, a, uh, a project that would be approved by the, we normally have the, uh, fire department. Police and town administrator. Review the plan and there's, there's, oh, Jim could probably say, you have the whole safety procedure to go through.
I did, I did review the preliminary plan and I sent Shep some, some questions. He and I have not been in direct contact, you know, because the information I got came initially through Rodney. Um, and then I did respond to him and say, you know, look, it's, it's a weekend. I don't have staff, right? So I don't have anybody to put barricades out. We can put barricades out, but. You know, there's one of the questions I had for you, Shep, is do you have volunteers that can help put the barricades out? I did talk with our resident trooper. He's not on, on February 2nd, but he was willing to change his dates of work so that this could be covered by him. Um, so that we don't incur overtime costs for the resident state trooper, um. You know, if we can, if we can, you know, resolve issues with, you know, getting volunteers to help put barricades out. Uh, that are covered by insurance as well as, you know, coverage from the state police and. Assistance from the Bolton Volunteer Fire Department. I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't go ahead. I guess my other thing would be, you know, something you need to think about. Is, you know, we're gonna be closing roads essentially in a neighborhood for, you know, 20 to 30 minutes. You would have to find some way of notifying them that, you know, this is gonna happen because, you know, we can't. We can close, we can close the road at the end of Hanover Farms and Brandy Street. But what happens if somebody on Hanover Farms decides to go grocery shopping during the middle, middle of your road race? Or, or anybody along that stretch that you're running. Right, so there's some notification that would have to take place as well.
I was just, to piggyback off that, I was wondering if you've done outreach to the, the neighbors at all. It is, you know, you're proposing to do a kind of a later time. On a Sunday, right, which is a time when people go out to, to Jim's point and run errands and I, I, I don't know if you've gotten a sense that our, our neighbors along that route supportive of the idea? Are they willing to, you know, stay in their homes for that time? Um, just because I know we've gotten flack from some residents for setting stuff up without, uh, you know, talking to them first. And so transparency and communication is super important.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah.
And from that point of view, it seems like a earlier time would be better, like 8 o'clock or.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure you have ten, you're sure to.
Yeah.
All morning.
We're, we're subject to that anyways. On that 5K race that they have.
Yeah, it's, it's signed up a lot longer.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Granted, that's.
But there's been a lot of, uh, information and posting about that over the years and people are ready for it. They know it. They see that Tom Green. Um, my, I recommend that. Um, Shepherd, that you put together a flyer and. On the approval of the Selectmen and put it in people's. Doors. Not in their mail.
Not in their mailboxes.
Right, but they could be draped over their flag in their mailbox, perhaps.
Absolutely, cool, yep.
Uh, but, um, or a little baggie of some kind, um, and hung from their mailbox so that the residents are notified that to make plans. Or even. And they could bring their cars at the farm or something.
Or just leave for an hour.
Leave for an hour. Leave, leave early.
It's going well.
Or sit in the front lawn and watch the rain.
Or.
Please watch.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
And hope that it's not 20 below.
Uh, yeah.
Well, then from the living room window.
And then make sure you put the rain, it's no date on, or rain date.
So it sounds like. Sounds like we're pretty much in consensus with the, with the caveat that. Uh, it continues to work for. Fire administrator and state police.
Do we, I guess we have to prove this, don't we?
You should, yes, because it's a closure of town road.
I'm, I'm, yeah. No, I'm not gonna move anything right away. I'm thinking out instead of doing my normal, uh, word salad here, um. That's. Oh, move, okay. Move, we approve the, uh, Mr. Livingston's request. Uh, to hold his Groundhog Day run on February 2nd and with a backup date of February 9th. With the various stipulations that were discussed at the meetings such as notifying. All the residents along the property, meeting with the proper authorities and getting approvals from all the appropriate authorities to include. Town administrator, our resident trooper, and the Bolton Fire Department, their proper barriers. And also to pr- provide proper staffing to put up and take down these street barriers.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's seven, yes. Congratulations. I look forward to seeing the letter in my mailbox.
Yeah, on top of your mailbox or, or on your, uh, door, so, all right.
And who seconded?
Uh, this, Pam, sorry.
Okay. I can't see. You're all very tiny with this on the screen.
Uh, okay, so now we'll get back to the budget and the tax update.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad you could make it. Go steady. So is there any input on the? No, every, everything is, everything is on track. You know, last year at this time, we were talking about concerns over refuse, but even that, you know, even that looks to be on track. Uh, then moving on, we'll consider an act on approving the budget transfer.
I make a question that we have to leave the budget transfer as the.
Uh, I'll second that. All in favor? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's seven, yes. When the transfer approved.
Was that Tim that seconded?
Negative.
That was Rodney that seconded.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Do I sound like Tim?
I don't know, you were looking down. I couldn't tell.
Now for ongoing business discussion on policy and procedures regarding the grand list. Um, so. We wanted to. Discuss whether the. Uh, committee that was put together. Is gonna be moving forward with that.
So the, the recommendation from the committee was just that the Board of Selectmen implement policies. If you want us to develop specific ones for consideration, that's something that would have to get sent back to the subcommittee. We didn't come up with anything specific other than. Uh, document retention policies and checks and balances. As two categories where we need policy development.
Yep. I agree, I agree.
That's good.
Um, so which way do we want to?
We just, I just, I just want direction and guidance so that we can move it forward. Well, you know, we're pretty soon here, we're gonna be trying to finalize the October 2024 grand list and I would like to have something in place prior to that.
So. Go ahead.
Well, maybe to respond, our, our concern was, we wanted to make sure that there was a redundancy policy in place so that, um. We retain, um. We, we, we have a, a, a retention time. we, we, we have a, a, a retention time limit, so we have, if we get transferred documents, we should retain them for
so many years.
Whatever.
One.
Yeah, I, I don't know that this is something that we can fully address in the short term. I think we need, uh, uh, quite frankly, we need more information, right? So what document retention and storage policies already exist? If we are currently supposed to, if we have policies that say certain state retention policies, what are they? And how are we training staff? Like, it's a big, it's a bigger picture thing, I think, than a, a short-term fix. I mean, we can certainly put something temporary in place if the board wants to do so, but I do think it needs more research and thought, um, put into it before we can implement something long-term.
So this was put in regarding the grand list. So, because we have a new grand list gonna be coming out, we wanna get that policy in place. So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from Amanda is maybe put some checks and balances in place immediately, so that we make sure this issue doesn't repeat itself, and then look more globally at policies and procedures.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I don't mean to jump in here, that's exactly, that, that, that was part of our, the committee's discussion, and that was really where we're going, we, where we were going with this thing. And that it should be, as Jim says, a, a, a policy that, that's townwide, in, in all our, this whole administration going forward, we never really had, we, we, we've had it at piecemeal, but this points out, it's, yeah, we should have a, a general policy, a overall policy, and this, since it's never happened before, we probably haven't looked at certain aspects that we are not looking at.
I mean, I think in order to develop a temper, even a temporary policy, I would need maybe a committee conversation with Kara to understand how the standard year differs from a reval year, because I don't even know if the export that caused all these issues even happens in a non-reval year, which I don't think it does, so it may be a moot point, um.
Do you have a resource that would come up with a basic policy of some sort?
You could reach out to, um, perhaps some of the bigger group CCM, or Costa might have something.
Costa, one of those folks, I mean, they're just, they're not creating, we're, we're not reinventing the wheel here.
Just tickle them and see if they have anything, but somebody's got it in there.
We did reinvent the wheel.
When it comes to a whole big document retention policy, I have, you know, samples of that, but as it relates to this specific one, yeah, I wouldn't. I, I, I mean, I think, I don't know, I was prepared to come up with something specific, but I think with regards to this year, because it's not a reval year, the issue is making sure essentially that Kara and Lori are on the same page with regards to the data between their two systems.
Yeah, and, and, and on, on the board's behalf, I mean, the policy is a responsibility of the board, but on the board's behalf, I am absolutely willing to sit down and meet with staff and see if we can come up with, you know, some, some language for stopgap measures to make sure that, you know, w- we, we don't experience this issue again.
That would be.
So is everybody in favor of that?
I, I think that's, that's really where we felt we should start.
Okay, yeah. And I would, I really, you know, I asked Rodney to, you know, have this on the meeting agenda tonight, so that we could discuss this, so that I have some direction and guidance as to where the board wants this to go, so I'm, I'm happy to do that, uh, I'll try to get that done next week.
And I love it, I don't, have we looked at the employee him, like the really old employee, I don't think there's anything in there.
There's nothing in there. Um, now for new business, consider an act allowing Arfonier to be certified official to execute contracts for the B E M H S Cyber Security Grant Program.
Mr. Second?
Yes.
Second, I would make a motion that we have our first black man, Rodney Fornier.
Be certified.
Be certified for the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Protect, Public Protection, uh, uh, for the state and local cybersecurity grant program.
Is there a second? Can I make a correction for you?
Yep.
Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Their title doesn't match their acronym.
Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security.
Oh, it's a division.
Thank you, I think I stand corrected.
Uh, Bob Morris seconded, uh, all in favor, or is there any discussion, hold on? Sorry, yeah.
I'm, I'm just wondering exactly what Rodney is signing here, because it, it said Rodney, I Rodney Fornier am authorized to execute the attached agreement on behalf of the town of Bolton. So it, and, and we, we don't have, we don't have that attachment, so I, I just am wondering whether, it sounds like the intent is to have Rodney be able to sign all sorts of contracts under this heading, but it says he's author, author, authorized to execute an attached agreement, so I, I, yeah, so.
So your, your motion specifically was for, um, the cybersecurity grant program? That's what your motion is for, and that you've already authorized us to apply for those grants, which we have.
Which would be the contracts, execute contracts?
So this should really read, I, I Rodney Fornier am authorized to execute contracts relating to the cybersecurity grant program.
This is a document that came from the department.
Yeah, I get it, now, you know, of course, there's always gonna be, you know, but, but I'm just, there's nothing attached to this, which bugs me. You know, it, it, some, somebody might get this back and say, well, all Rodney's authorized to sign is what was attached, well, what is, what is attached? So.
Is this going with the application, is that what's being attached, the application for the cybersecurity grant?
Not, we already applied for the grant, right.
So it would be a contract of you.
Of the grant.
If we were awarded it.
Right.
But we just don't have, have the fourth.
You know, I have, I have no problem authorizing Rodney to, the, the general concept of signing contracts, but this specific document is saying that he's signing that for an attachment. So I, uh, yeah.
Written by an agency with all kinds of attorneys and all kinds of people.
And this didn't come to us with an attachment?
I, I don't know, because it didn't come to me, it came to our emergency management.
When's it, do you know when this is due?
I think it's past due.
I'm good with it, that's the way it is, I, I, I don't think they're trying to trick us or.
Are there any other discussion then?
It didn't.
Who seconded?
Who seconded that? Nobody, I don't think anybody.
I think, uh, Bob did.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I guess Gwen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear that stuff, I'm sorry, I, I missed the conversation.
So all in favor? Aye. Two, three, four, five, and two noes?
I'm gonna have to vote against it, just because it's so unclear what, what you're actually being addressed to do.
Amanda's abstaining, one votes no, and there's five yeses. Next is to consider an act on date for town meetings last week of January or first week of February, uh, for expenditure of the ARPA funds. So we have the funds, and we've got the contracts, which, the sum of the contracts is only ten dollars more than the total, and we just need to get it through a town meeting to approve, uh, we're spending the money on.
No.
Did that come out right?
No, no.
So, we, we have, we have two, we have two ways, so right now, all of our money is in one pot. And that, that pot is for the demolition of the Notch Road Municipal Center. We have two ways of reallocating those funds to the other projects that we approved and signed contracts for. One is during the budget process, to move those monies into the appropriate accounts, and wait until after the budget passes to spend those dollars, with the exception of the money that's in the Notch Road demolition account that can already be spent, and we've already spent some of it on the school project. However, I think it's probably better than to have a town meeting to discuss this publicly and move those funds, so that we can get those monies expensed sooner rather than later. And we can do that with, with a town meeting, with the approval of the taxpayers at a town meeting. So that could be done in January, early February, instead of in next July, if the budget passes. Is there any questions, is there a, a date that we'd like to pick?
Did we see a list of the actual, of the contracts? And did all the contracts get signed by December thirty-one? Excellent, good. And could we see, could we have a list, could you send a list to the selectmen of, of all those contracts and who they're with and what then the amounts of it for? Okay, and that's gotta obviously go to the public too, for that, for that meeting that was gonna happen.
What if we put it on Tuesday at five o'clock, and then have the AP, that's the real proceeding?
What, what Tuesday?
Fourth, January twenty-eighth.
Oh, it's twenty-eighth.
Oh, no, let me, no, sorry, five o'clock.
I would, I would rather do it early in February myself, that's what I'm thinking.
Can we put it to the last January, had we done that? Have I misunderstood?
No, we don't have, we've executed the contracts, that's what we needed to do before January. We had the, she had, last week of January or first week of February, we were just trying to push it along.
Oh, okay.
As for dates.
Our, our regular meeting would be the fourth at six thirty. You could hold the town meeting at six thirty and have their meeting at seven, I mean, I.
Well, we can't move the regular meeting, can we?
It would become a special. We change it to a special.
Could we make the public hearing at six?
That's.
And have the Board of Selectmen meeting immediately following.
It works fine for me. I mean, this. And I, can we contribute that?
Sure.
It's the fourth.
Six o'clock on the fourth, that's, that's the proposal? Six o'clock on the fourth?
Yeah.
Are you, can you make it that's six, Tim, can you?
Yes. We'll have to check and see if our moderator is.
I'm pretty sure. So, do we, do we get that motion now, or you wanna check it to moderator first?
I think you could make the motion pending the availability of moderator.
You can make that motion.
Second?
Pam Sawyer's seconding it, all in favor? Aye, seven yeses. Tuesday, February fourth, six o'clock, pending moderator's availability for the public hearing for ARPA distribution.
Are all of our selectmen's meeting at six thirty now?
Yeah, except for your AP meeting, so they're at six.
I, I almost, I don't, for some reason, I had seven written down, I was glad that somebody sent a reminder earlier today.
Oh, yeah, this, this is your first goal, so keep going.
Yes.
Um, and so next is the, uh, consider an act on date, no, we just did that.
Jim's, uh.
Jim's report.
Well.
Did I miss something?
Do we want to add something to the agenda to consider an act on the budget work, proposed budget workshop dates?
We can, we can do that.
I'll make a motion to add item seven C, under new business, consider an act on the proposed twenty twenty-five budget workshop dates.
Second, Bob Morris, any questions? And the reason it's kind of important that we did that, thank you Amanda, is the first one's.
Next week.
Next week. Well, and I apologize, with Kathy on vacation and me being sick, unfortunately, we got to this a little later than we would like, but but we did, we did get it done till you, till tonight. Well, so, that would be immediately following the AP meeting, is there? Are these all meetings?
No, yeah, the twenty-first is by itself.
The six thirty thing works good. That's what?
Oh, I'm sure there's a reason, scheduling wise.
On, on Wednesday, the fifth of February, I have a, I have a standing meeting in the first Wednesday of every month, so that date doesn't work for me. I could, I mean, I, I would miss it if everybody else, if everybody else is available for it.
Which one was?
Uh, Wednesday, February fifth. Could that be changed to the eleventh, tack it on to the AP?
AP is the eleventh, I think.
But then, then there'd be two that week, though, so there's one on the third. There won't really be two that week, and two a week.
Then if we're doing well, we can always, you know, drop, drop a meeting, or if we need to, we can add a meeting.
So, so what do people think about that February fifth meeting, are you gonna keep that one, or are you, will you consider moving, changing that to the eleventh? Yes, I, I have an AP meeting written down for that date, the eleventh.
AP meeting would be just one week after our regular board meeting?
That was my question.
Well, well, that was because we had not wanted to change the regular Board of Selectmen's meetings from the first Tuesday of the month.
This has gotten to be such a muckness, but, but lucky.
Because we were gonna combine them, but.
But that's my fault.
Because people, because people are so accustomed to the first Tuesday, we didn't wanna interrupt the land of steady habits. Well, and it doesn't, it doesn't always line, even, even if we moved it, it would have lined up more, but it still doesn't line.
It ended up being three more meetings.
Right.
A year, was it?
It, it doesn't line up every time. These APs are, are online too.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the budget workshop dates as presented, with the exception of removing Wednesday, February fifth, and replacing it with Tuesday, February eleventh, immediately following the AP meeting, that's already scheduled.
Yeah, because there might, uh, there might be ZBA or something. We could, we could, we could all, we'll bring Kate.
That's good, I'll second it.
But we could always meet, we could always meet in a different building.
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Bob Morris.
Thank you.
We, we did look at the calendar when we picked these dates. So there may, there may be a reason. Seems to me there might be ZBA that night.
We have to modify and see.
The eleventh.
I meant eleventh. Yeah, there's a ZBA at seven.
We can hold it at the, yeah.
We're already, we're already holding our AP meeting in Notch Room A.
Yeah, okay, so we're.
So we could do that.
We can do it.
Is that the only one that's gonna be?
You get a pencil, oh, pencil, oh.
Oh, knows to what we'll get into the Bible.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't dare do that.
And a chocolate and choc- a chocolate birthday cake for chocolate frosting, please?
So that's replacing the fifth. Replacing the fifth, right? Who's the fifth is gone to the eleventh.
So before six P M, oh, that's a stretch, running home from work and.
Thank you.
It's at six thirty.
AP is at six.
Oh.
And this will be immediately following. And the re- the reason we picked um room B is because it's easier for staff to set up. The second hour over there as opposed to a different meeting location.
Okay, so now we're on to.
We have to vote.
Yes, you have to vote.
Oh, all in favor? I I bet seven yes.
May I ask another question under this same topic?
Yeah.
Is the board okay if I pull together the, well. Whatever's left of the cap dates, these dates and the Board of Education into a flyer for distribution to town folks about that shows all the.
With the Board of Finance, the budget meetings.
Well, I won't have, I won't have all the finance meetings yet. That would have to be a second flyer, but I want. Us to try and be more transparent about all the different budget meetings that go on.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Anybody?
Could you have it co-signed by the first selectman?
Oh, yeah, I'll send it to the distributor.
That's fine. So next on the list is Jim's report.
But you did provide your copies. And this is, you know, this is, again, this is just some of the stuff that we've been working on during the last month. Unfortunately, we had a separate separation of employment with an employee. From the buildings and grounds and we'll be posting that position to fill. Uh, we have executed all of the ARPA grant contracts. Which include the demolition reconstruction of the natural facility. The U T V replacement for fire department, removal and infill of the manure pit at the heritage farm. Generators at Bolton Center School and Town Hall and reclaiming and paving of our door basket reports. Uh, we, I did complete the draft changes to the ordinances, sent them to town attorney for review. I have his comments back, so I will be implementing those recommendations. Uh, that were given to us by the town attorney. The Lori Road Drainage Project is nearly complete, but there'll be some final grading and seeding that'll have to be done in the spring. Uh, something of great joy is that the wetlands remediation at sixty five Shoddy Mill Road is complete. It will need some spring planting. Unfortunately, we still have zoning issues and illegal curb cut there that we're dealing with. But at least the the uh thing that has taken a lot of staff time, a lot of town attorney time. Uh, that that is is done. Um, the new fire engine is at Atlantic Detroit with a failed transmission. Uh, we're, we're having conversations with Allison, which is the transmission manufacturer regarding warranty provisions we have. At this point, we have no um. No anticipated date for return to service. Uh, all of our December events were very successful. There was a lot of community participation. It was one of the things that we did this year is differently because we, we reached out to Bolton Town Agational Church and we actually. Partnered with them for the event up here. Which I think worked out really well for both the town and for the church. We did have a meeting uh with Karma to discuss our insurance. Uh, provisions and if they had any recommendations for this upcoming fiscal year. And they also gave us an overview of other services that they provide. Uh, we have, we have some grant funds that were given to us by the federal government for. Celebration at the farm, which didn't happen because of COVID. So we have about ten thousand dollars left. So I'll be meeting with some folks from the uh Farm Commission. We'll be looking at. Ways that we can spend that money. They don't really want it back. They just want us to find an appropriate way to spend those funds. So we'll be working on that here in the very near future. We did meet with the Capital Region Council of Governments, uh with the town engineer. And reviewed the Heritage Farm Trail Plan. Uh, they have some questions which we are working on answering. But that generally went pretty well. We conducted the free bird walkthrough of the natural facility and held the public bid opening. Uh, we completed and posted the RFP for the facility study. And we are implementing new invoicing for out of state ward clerks. We had conversations with the auditor. Um, the finance department and it becomes very difficult though to deal with. Payroll taxes and everything else when we have out of state employees, so they will be ten ninety nine employees. With W nines and we've implemented an invoicing system for that. My staff informed me today that they've updated the page, the webpage for the twenty twenty five meetings and events. And, you know, I think this is the one that, you know, maybe we want to talk about a little bit. Well, certainly happy to talk about anything, but we're working on putting together some information. To potentially apply for the transportation rule improvement uh program for potential application. Replace the Lyman Road Bridge. We we authorized me to do that. Maybe a year or two ago, we we unfortunately did not get the grant at that point. Um, but it's, I I think it's the best opportunity we have to get significant funding. For that bridge. The bridge condition is changing. We have a crack in the road at this point, which indicates that things are beginning to move. So we really, this is not something that we can continue to not fund and and put off. My hope was that we could potentially use town aid road funds for our match. The preliminary information I've gotten back from D O T is that it has to be a standalone project. And the matching funds have to come from a town source. They can't, we can't use other grant funds to do that, so. You know, we would be looking at funding around about five hundred and ten thousand dollars for this project. Looking at the price escalation, you know, when I, every, every time that I look at this. I asked the town engineer to give us, you know, new uh updated pricing. Every year it seems to go up like ten to twelve percent. So, you know, the longer we put it off. The more, the more it's gonna cost. So I, you know, I I haven't got the magic bullet as to where to find the funding. Um, you know, one of the things, these are things that we can certainly talk about in. Uh, the finance committee meetings about the capital budget and. Other, you know, other, you know, finance meetings and budget meetings with the board of selectmen. And I'm not gonna ask you to, you know, authorize me to. Um, apply for the grant tonight. Um, I've got a month to get it done. I'll have the grant ready to go so that. As soon as we figure out if we can fund this. And I think we can, I think we'd be in a position that we could fund it over a two-year period. By the time we got the grant. Put money in the capital budget, put money in, we'd, I think it would. I think we could spread the finances out over a two-year period, so we're not trying to, you know, eat it all up in one year. But we have to make sure that we have the funding in place before we apply for the grant, or at least the mechanism for the funding.
Who's responsible for awarding that grant? What department or what?
So it's a part, the part, these, these grants come from the Department of Transportation. But they're administered through the Capital Region Council of Government, so they, they act as conduct agents when reviewing the grants.
So Cap Region would be the one to approve or deny it?
Usually their transportation committee. Last, the last time we applied, there were extra points for. You know, trails and connectivity issues and and things of that nature and we just. Compared to the other grant applications, we didn't, we didn't rank. And so, you know, it's just a, you know, standalone bridge. So, you know, the, you know, the other opportunities for grant funding for this bridge would be the state and local bridge program. But they only fund fifty percent. And when you do the math, this, this is a better choice.
Both and.
You can't, no. The, that's the problem is most of these grants don't, don't allow you. To use others, other grant sources to to make the match.
Or you mean just apply for both?
I mean, apply and then except if we get both, except whichever one is in our best interest.
Just take the best one. Well, I don't, I don't know that there is an opportunity to apply for that. The other program at this point. Right now, the trip grant is open until February fourth. I've already prepared one for this bridge, so it's not gonna be a heavy lift to get the grant prepared.
Just new pictures showing the new crack. Really driving home.
Well, that, the issue, that, that. The issue with that location and that particular, it's called, but calling it a bridge. Is with these heavy rainfall, the amount of water surge through there is incredible and actually. If it happens occasionally, you, you, you can stretch it, but this has happened. Numerous times in the last few years, I don't see anything.
What's the flood plain for half a bolt?
Right.
I mean, it really is.
It really is. And it's just impacting that, that. Something that was not designed to to do what it's doing.
Is the new design an actual bridge?
No, it's a, it's, it's, I believe it's box. So right now, I think there's, I think there's. I think there's twin corrugated stainless, corrugated steel culverts and they, they wear at the water line.
Right.
And that's exactly what's happening here. These colors are worn at the water line. And, you know, things, things are beginning to move. Right, concrete box culverts is, I believe, what the, what the bridge design has been called for.
And that's more sustainable than the current.
Yes, absolutely.
Outlive us.
Well, certainly me.
And more of a expensive construction method.
Well, another issue too, you, you, you have to keep. And so there's, you know, there's a whole issue of, of in that construction where you, you have to divert the water. While you, while you're doing the bridge and then re-divert it into.
So what's the total cost of that project? About?
It was about, it was just shy of one point seven million, so. Yeah, crazy, isn't it? And then, and then it would be, you know, about three hundred and forty thousand dollar match. And then in conversations with the town engineer, additional engineering and helping with the bid documents and bid process. Uh, would be estimated probably on the high side at about a hundred and seventy thousand. And that also included uh construction, you know, inspections during construction.
Doesn't the ox culvert actually speed up the flow of the water through it? Because there's no, the corrugated pipes kind of slow it down. And I'm, I'm just thinking about erosion on the downside if you, if you. Putting in a slick.
It's one of the things that they have to worry about with the engineering. Is they have to worry about scour, they have to worry about, you know, um, the velocity of the water. Those are all things that they have to do in their engineering design.
So there's, is there gonna be some kind of material placed on the outflow?
Well, nor- normally you have a natural bottom. In those box culverts and that's really, it's one of the things that they really like about box culverts. Is it's, it's a structure that's not gonna move and decay like the corrugated steel, but. You can have a natural bottom in there, which is certainly better for the things that live in the water body.
Oh, yeah, I thought it, I thought it was gonna have a concrete base, but it's not, so it's, it's like. It's not really.
It's a box. But they typically put um native material.
I see.
In the, in the bottom.
Placed lower than the bottom of the river. Any other questions on the? The administrators group talk, yes.
Thank you for letting us know the facility study is out. Do we have an update on the fire department strategic plan? RFP and have we had any discussion on? How we plan to spend the twenty thousand dollars that the board allocated to improve efficiencies in the finance department?
So, yeah, one of the things I didn't put in my report is we've actually been. Rodney and I did have a meeting with finance department to talk about some of the. Things that were happening over there and the, and the thing, the thing that came out of that meeting is that one of the things that would probably really help. Repair efficiencies is and and free them up to do other things is to uh. To, to get rid of payroll. So we've actually had meetings with, one meeting with a payroll company and we are having a second meeting later on this week. I believe it's two days from now. Um, we are meeting with E D P and we're gonna have those conversations.
I have feelings about E D P.
So, I mean, they're, they're, they're. So we reached out to a couple of companies and they were the. Right, they're, they're the company that got back to us the quickest. And so we had a meeting with them and we're meeting with them with the finance director on Thursday. Uh, it doesn't, if, if we decide to go this route, we would put, put out an RFP. Right, and and, you know, reach out to others, invite them to bid.
Did we reach out to Tyler and try to talk to them about how we can improve the way that Tyler is working?
We have tried to reach out to Tyler on multiple occasions.
On the number I gave you on the card?
Yes. Him got the same card. And they, we actually did get an email back, I believe, last, last week or the week before we. And we have to follow up with, with Tyler. We're, we're, we're trying to meet with them. We're trying very hard.
Where are they based?
I don't know that answer.
People who don't respond to us when we are paying them money.
That was only one answer. What was the other part of your question?
Oh, the fire department strategic plan.
Fire department's strategic plan, I, I've gotta work on that some more. We have, what we've done so far is we have pulled together several other strategic plans. And I did meet with Chief Dixon. Maybe about a month ago. Um, you know, we've been, we've been very wrapped up, as you know, in the. In the ARPA funding project, which is now. At a dull roar, you know, it's, it's manageable at this point, so it, that, that and. Uh, redrafting the ordinances with the town attorney's. Uh, comments, th- those are part of my main focus aside from just day-to-day things.
And off the top of your head, do you have any sense for how much we pay Tyler per year for their contract?
I don't. I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna guess. It's probably a lot.
I'm about to write nasty.
So I remember there's the right to farm ordinance, that's.
Uh, was the, one was the data ordinance? One was the right to farm. Oh, God, no, never.
There's more than, there's more than two?
Was it the ordinance around the dental fund? Now, we're not gonna give it down. There was an issue.
Wasn't the contracting.
I'll send it out with the other information I promised.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
I'll send out the list.
And the, and the last time the list is the, the auditor starting it.
Well, the order is not starting. I mean, the order has been going and going on. We, we are still researching answers to questions. We got about seventy questions. Jill answered a bunch, but she had about seventy that she couldn't answer. And sent them over here and many of these questions go back multiple administrations. So trying to find, you know. Contracts that somebody might have signed ten years ago. Some of that can be difficult.
He's a busy boy.
The enter?
It, it, it's an, it's an amazing, it's an amazing amount of work. And we, you know, some of the answers are simple and easy. You know, we can answer them off the top of our heads. Others, you know, go back beyond the period of time that any of us here at the table have familiarity.
But so he's auditing expenses from last fiscal year, so it's related to expenses. We're paying the contractors and we don't ha- know where the contracts are, like they're, we're paying things on contracts that are that old?
S- some of them are old, yes.
Okay.
And it's just, it's been the nat- it's just been the natural course of business for the town.
Yeah.
Over the years, and he's questioning them, and I think rightfully so.
But he's pulling random.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I don't think there's a, you know, a, 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 you know, a, a particular order of things.
Shall we move on to number nine? Which is adjourned?
Take a motion. I'll be it.
Bob's favorite.
Oh.
Make motion to adjourn.
Bob's seconding it. All in favor? Aye, 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 means adjourned.